Good evening and welcome to the Wellington Board of Education Special Meeting Budget Workshop Number Brief. It is January twenty ninth, two thousand twenty five. We are beginning at five thirty, five thirty one on this meeting order. We're going to begin with the pledge allegiance. You're welcome.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the digital liberty and justice for all.
We are prepared for President to speak. If there's anybody online who wanted to jump in, shout hands. Hello, thank you to our online participants. Okay. Let us proceed. Okay, we're going to be talking about Program Eight, which is Operations Maintenance, as well as Program Nine, System Wide Support this evening. And after that, we're going to review programs we have put them about previously. So let's do operations and maintenance. This is Program Eight.
And I'll talk about your, the changes in front of you after once you get the adjustments. So see, you can, you can go through that. So Operations and Maintenance Program Eight, this is the funding for custodial maintenance services for center and all school. You can see that one of the secretaries is, sorry, hold on, it's not working, use George right now. You can see that one of the secretaries has a portion of their job tied to this. It's that point one five. We have one maintenance custodian at each building and then CES has a night custodian and HMS has two night custodians. Again, based upon square footage, so that makes sense. The salary section of this program are contractual, contractual for WIS. The only one that's not in that West Union is the facilities director position that is an outlier separate contract. So we just left it flat as is. I think I'll be talking about that later on with alterations, plus you, as we go through that. When you're okay, when you're allergic to me. When you look at the summer custodian line, we did increase that a little bit and we went back to look at actual use. And that is the reason why that number has an increase. We also had a little bit of a bump there because we anticipate the people that had been working for us are going to come back. And we need to contractually give them a little bit of a bump that's tied to that, that contract. So it's, it's a combination of both things, right? When you look at the purchase service line, it looks like there's a monster jump for KERMA. Property insurance, that's also your cybersecurity insurance is in that. And so what happened last year? We got our cyber insurance starting, I think March first was our first month we had it. We, we paid for it in February and what Donna had asked was instead of just paying, getting off cycle, meaning every, putting everything July one is, you renew everything July one, we actually paid for sixteen months. So we paid for sixteen months last year. We knew that. So that means we didn't budget funds for twenty four, twenty five. We talked about that as a board in your current budget, which is why there's a jump there. So your cyber insurance is around seven thousand dollars, which the jump from thirty two to forty two is the increase and now adding the cyber insurance, we're back on a twelve month cycle, July one of twenty five. Does that make sense? It's just something that as we track and we renew contracts out of the business office, it's significantly easier to have that. And we had the funds last year to do it, so which is why we did the sixteen months. The supply, the social supply line, that is all of the materials, paper towels, toilet paper, tissues, mops, cleaning chemicals, soap, paint, all of that stuff. You see an increase there. I literally just sent principals and maintenance crew an email and said, you have spent seventy five percent of your supply money for this year already and you are at like day one hundred. So we're tracking this line closely. I did increase it because supplies have gone up. It's not necessarily that we're using more. And both are pretty equal as far as what they're using. There's, I thought there was, one was using more. It's, it's not showing that way. They're relatively equal. It's just that things are expensive. So I'm watching that number. That's what I'm proposing now, but if it continues to be tight like it has been this year, then we might need to increase that again next year. Yeah.
I mentioned this last meeting, at the end of the meeting, just thinking about it, but it might be advantageous to maybe switch to like blow dryers for hands instead of paper towels.
Yeah.
We could look into that. It would save obviously on paper towels and garbage bags. And then, well, again, that's where I'm trying to say, incidentally, from not having as many paper towels.
Yeah, even if it's.
Something to think about. I don't know what there is power sources, especially because it's probably blocked wall.
Yeah.
An issue, but.
Yeah. If there is already electric there, that can, we can check that. There may be certain bathrooms. I don't know if there's electric at center. I have to assume there's some sort of electric because the lights are right there over the sinks, if it's enough power.
I mean, it might be a small, I don't know if it would be ten grand to put on CIP to have someone come in and just.
Replace them.
Run the line down, down the wall. They could do like in the exterior conduit down or, I don't know if that's the right terminology, but you know what I'm talking about.
I will look into that. I don't have the answer for that.
That's fine. I just wanted to bring it up to mention something.
The last thing that's in there is that just the travel. And that's, that's when they go to Manchester Supply, who get gas, there's no bill, things like that. They get reimbursed, so we put money in that. And we typically use all of that money each year. That's Program Eight. Just remember that the M Corp contract is not in this one. Those are the M Corp preventive maintenance is in Program One and Two, not in this one. Questions about eight? Okay, Programming Nines, this is just a variety of items you need to operate a school district. You have IT services in here. You have some magnet school tuition in here. You have legal fees, school security items. It's a variety of things. You can see that a portion of my administrative assistant is tied to transportation, which is why she's only point eight five in here. So it is a full time position. Just the other point one five is in transportation. And we also have a district wide substitute caller in this program. That person is the person that does their best to find subs for us before school or somebody called out at night. And then they make the adjustments that they need to in the mornings from the secretaries. So it's not a lot. You can see the salaries that are in there. And there's a slight increase there. The purchase service line, we have broken out, and this is a, oh, I always say this every year, but this is an area where when I came in, this was not so clear. And we've worked hard to break this out so you can see exactly what you're getting out of this program. It's a lot more transparent, I think. We increased the funding of for students attending magnet schools next year. That's that, that first line there for purchase service. There's a law that's in place right now for this year, capping out the tuition cost that they can, how much they can charge. And that law is supposed to go away this year. If the legislators extend it, it's, you know, it's good for us. But I don't want to plan on it because it's not a hot button topic, to be honest with you. So we're playing, that increase is to cover a larger increase should they not extend the law. Okay?
How much is it about for one student to within?
Typically, again, non-special ed related, you're looking between four and seven thousand dollars depending on the program. There are some programs that depending on where they are, are free. It's just certain programs.
The, this line is based on how many students are at magnet school currently?
Correct, correct. Yes. That next slide, teacher retirement valuation, this is one of the most things that you have to do. It's an actuarial valuation. It determines your liability and that's for having retired teachers on your insurance. And so this is just something you have to do. Every two years, you have to do a full valuation. And you also have to do disclosure. So it's the nineteen hundred plus the balance thirteen one to make it fifteen thousand. The next year it would be nineteen hundred. So we have to budget that full amount to do that. It's I, I just, it's just baffling that we have to do this, but it's because we don't get anything great out of the report. It's just, you know, seeing what your liability will be and you have to do. I did drop, or sorry, can I ask a question?
Yeah, if it's every the year, why isn't it showing on twenty three, twenty four?
We've, we prepaid it. So anytime there's an adjustment, which is there, there would have had been an adjustment right there, it would be zero. So we prepaid that in twenty two, twenty three. You don't see that because we prepaid the fifteen thousand twenty two, twenty three because you had funds left over. So you have to zero out your adjustment for, for twenty three, twenty four. Does that make sense? It's a little funky. We had the funds in there, so when you moved it out, there's, it's zero. I dropped legal fees a thousand dollars. We're going to get through negotiations this year in between our, our current retainer that we have and our billing that we're doing even, and the policy services in a different line. But we've been doing okay between Marsha, I would say is one that uses the attorney public a little bit more from all the administrator's perspective, just because we usually are asking special education questions. Sometimes it's homeless or liaison kind of questions. So it's, it's not always something that's a big deal. It's just day to day, making sure we're following the law. The administrators do call sometimes. It's typically when I'm saying, hey, just confirm this with the attorney, but we're uncomfortable with that drop. The copier lease here is mine. It is not as significant because it was balanced out between the town and county office building copier contracts. The others were significantly higher because there was a balance here. We made out a little bit on the side for the town side. The IT licenses, there's a decrease there from eighteen to eleven. Some of our increases that we planned for in twenty four, twenty five, they didn't come in as high as they expect, as we expected, which is great. And we also just recently, we shopped around for, do you have V backup services? We use V backup services as part of our IT support. And with V, we got a three year contract, which was better. It was significantly cheaper and I could pay for it all with money that was in this year's budget. So basically I got, I paid one year and got three. And so we don't, we, we took that out of the budget for next year. You'll be able to do the same thing the following year as well. At some point it will come back, but the, it was just not, you can't have pass a multi-year contract when it's basically the cost of one year for three. And Novus helped do that work. The jump in the IT support is the managed, and Novus is the managed support side. Peter and I both had meetings with them and they are pretty tight with their books. They came back and across all of their clients, they noticed that their labor rates were too low. And just to keep their people on board and not lose their people, their labor rates had to come up. So it, we're still getting the same level of service, but they had to, had to pay their, a higher level of labor. Obviously that gets passed on to us. That's the difference there of the eleven thousand dollars. I'm going to say this till I'm blue in the face. This is a deal. I think for what we get from Novus, it's incredible.
They're onsite, what, three days a week?
They're onsite four days a week, but their, your tickets are twenty four, seven, basically three sixty five. And it's worth every penny. We also get Power School support as part of this dollar amount. And then Power School Administrator in most districts is a six figure position. We're getting all of it for our portion. And again, the town pays their portion, but we, it's, it's, for what we get out of this, it's worth every penny. The cybersecurity monitoring services, that's part of something that is, comes through just our, it's an additional piece that we have through Novus. It is again, when we were hacked by Russia a couple of years ago, they were the ones that caught it. It happened twice and they blocked it. If we didn't have that, we would have been in big trouble and the ransomware is, or the ransom costs are way more than sixteen thousand dollars. The other part of that is that we also do some trainings with our staff that helps them not click on things. And you have seen that also as part of you, you, many of you gone through that training, that know before training. It helps. So we monitor that. It's both part of it. School Messenger is our notification system that we get out to our families and staff. They also have our website. Again, we, we decreased the cost a little bit, just looking at past numbers. Power School, as you know, hosts our, our, our student operating system and the security certificate, the number that's there is blank. And I'm not sure why that is, and I'm going to have to check that out.
It's great because of the breach.
I was just gonna say that.
No.
I was gonna say, it got, who's got to know that.
I'm gonna ask, I think that's a mistake. I'll find out for you. I don't know if I missed that or if I made that dash and it shouldn't have been. The school assessment, hey, can you do me a favor and go into one of your original documents and see, because you have an older version of this? And see, you see that number in that form, please?
Thank you.
I don't think that's in here. School assess, school assessment, the I ready, we dropped, we used to use the toolbox. I crossed it off on mine now. But it says I ready, I ready toolbox. We dropped the significant because now we're only using I ready math. So that's, again, we, we budget what we need. And so the significant drop there is that we went from using the toolbox and I ready math and I ready reading. And now we're only doing the assessment for math. And so that's, that's the number. The no more district wide academic subscriptions, Newzella is gone, Read Naturally is gone because of CKLA and, and the Amplify products that we have, we don't need those products. Again, you reduce where you don't need it. They are coming out of the Amplify side. The security gateway there, the Raptor system is when people, visitors come into our buildings. When students are present, they have their ID scanned and background checked. That is the cost for that. You can see our telephone service is there. You can see the slight increase in the internet. I mentioned that was for all the buildings. You can see the postage is flat. The board clerk I dropped because we've been doing some minutes. We have a new person that's doing some of our minutes. I would say there are certain months where we can get through minutes in my office. It's like a hundred dollars a meeting, I think is what it comes out to. So like January is a little crazy because of all of our meetings. That's a meeting, that's a month that we will pay someone to do our minutes. And she's doing other minutes already. She actually did your last set of minutes and I think you didn't even notice they were pretty good. So that's why that's dropped. The five oh four is just a, it's a legal piece that's in there. Section five oh four is part of the Rehabilitation Act. Yeah, discriminate, it basically says you have to provide support to students that have a five oh four plan. And this is if there's something specific that we have to do for a student with a five oh four, there's money there to do it. So the technical services are there. And then anything that's ideological is also part of it as well.
One ten twenty five would be the other version?
For Power School hosting?
Yeah, I still see.
No, it's fine. Okay.
Is that the right version?
Yep. Yeah, interesting. I'm gonna have to check that one out. The public safety officers, we dropped. It's more, that's more where we've been at. That's for really when we'll call MK at the middle school has big events. And there's lots and lots and lots of people in that. You know, many of your shows or, or big games that we can bring in, promotion ceremony, we can bring in public safety officers. And we pay their contractual rate. It's fire guys from town. The mandatory training for staff CPI and now PMT is built into our contracts. Now we have an in-house person we're paying a stipend to. So she gets trained and then trains our staff is working out significantly better for us. So if a new staff member comes in tomorrow and we need to train them, we're not spending three thousand dollars to send a person out to get trained. It's just built in. We just have that person trained by our in-house person. Significantly better deal than what we were doing. You see the Amazon Prime subscription? We have a shared Zoom. That's with the town. We pay for a license or two. The policy service is the new piece that we talked about. That number is there. That's the recurring to get now any updated policies. And then E-rate consulting, the, the fee's down a little bit. That E-rate consulting is basically, it's kind of like we're eligible each year for a grant and it's tied to our internet as well. I mentioned we use E-rate to get a much better internet rate. We pay a friend that went to training, this is pre, predates me, in DC for this E-rate, it is very, very complex. We pay someone to do all of our paperwork to make sure everything's aligned. They do all of our quotes for us to make sure everything meets the standard to get the E-rate funding. The money we don't have to pay more than covers the cost of this person. So it's thirty six hundred dollars per year, but the last thing we got was like fifty grand. So it's, it's well worth it. And the annual subscription or the annual internet rate deals that we get too. We dropped supplies for BOE. We don't spend a lot of money on supplies for the BOE, sorry. So we dropped, dropped that a little bit. We kept our, our supplies flat because we typically use our supply money. So there's a minor change there. And then the dues and fees, that's like your professional organizations when we go to the CAFE conference. We up that because of the cost, their, their costs have gone up. We also pay for our business office to be members of CASBO. We've done that forever. And that's basically the Business Office Association, we'll call it. My dues are in there. They're flat. The dues for things like East Con and CT REAP is where we post positions. That's in there. The conference level is flat for BOE. My conference level is flat. My travel is contractual. That's flat. And then this is the, from the last approval about the six day buyout. I put the three hundred twenty dollars in, so you buy out one, that's one day. That's where, so that's the minimum that you would do because of where we're at right now with this. Right? So you see the, the, the budget total that's there. It's not a huge increase in the grand scheme of things. I'd say the increases, we could call it Novus, but again, it's, it's well worth every dollar we paid them, I think.
How come the service board, I don't know what service boards are for the telephone and internet, but how come it's not part of what the telephone and internet was in that different program?
So it's broken out by, when these programs were built, the way they're built, one hundred ten, it's to pay for that particular program. So the, the, this is kind of like, nine is kind of mine. And so the telephone service to mine is, this is just for me. Outgoing and then town is incoming. And then the internet, internet service is the cost for my internet here. We break it down by building to, so people know if you were to go to one building, you wouldn't pay times three. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Can I go to review of programs? Perfect. So just jump back to this. I'm going to go through what you have fresh in front of you. Things change quickly. Typically I hold my changes. This one I didn't hold. The special education program change, and so we updated this program alone to reflect those changes. And again, if we know the, the changes prior before, you know, approval, it just makes sense for us to do it. And there was actually some savings in it, so it made sense. So we were able to eliminate a pair. You can see that going down to fourteen point eight two. The math, that math works out from what it was. We decreased the expected cost of the school choice line. That was one fifty, I think, something like that. And that, that is now new information where we have updated either, it's, it could be an updated IP, could be updated cost, updated needs, any of those things. So that's the, that next line. The behavioral consultant, that's a change that went up. We had to add eight thousand dollars to that to meet current need. They also, part of this service comes through East Con. And Marsha, you probably can explain it better than I can, but my understanding is they've kind of pulled together a couple of contracts into one. It's got a new title. And part of that is an assistive tech evaluation, which typically costs.
Five thousand.
Five thousand dollars a shot. It's now part of this. So we could potentially change this behavior consultant line title to something else. Is that?
He's kind of calling it access. It's more of an umbrella service. So it's BCBA. It also is the assistive technology. It also is the, what's called AAC or augmented communication devices, so talkers. And it, I love the change. I think it is going to save us a lot. Because when you go to look at like an assistive tech eval or AAC consultation, they were charging up to five thousand dollars. So now it is, we're able to use more consultation service rather than just buying one contract for each situation. So I think it is gonna, e, e, even though it's an increase, it's really going to be a savings in the long run.
And that's new information. We did not have that last week. So that, we made that adjustment. So you can see with the changes, the totals we changed. And then if I go up to the, the new snapshot, you should have that page and it brings you down to a six, seven, two.
Can I just have a question before you answer this? So the pair went down, but the, the salaries went up.
No, it went up from last year.
Yeah.
What was your, so if you looked at your old document, it was five fifteen. That's what we were proposing. And now with the elimination of the pair, it's now down to four eighty five. So it has increased since twenty four, twenty five. But we were looking at five fifteen and now we're looking at four eighty five.
Excellent.
It's okay. The other piece that I'll give you as an update, that's good news that I did not change your program yet. I talked to our insurance broker on Monday and there's good and, and a little bit of annoying. So we got a not to exceed twenty five percent. That came from Connecticut, who's your current holder. And so when you, we went to market to go out to bid and having to budget for that number, Connecticut is not bidding on us now. We only have one person bidding on us. The, why that's annoying is because we only have a verbal now saying it's not doing to exceed nine or 10% increase. That's great news, but I don't have it in writing yet. So unless, until I have it written, I'm not comfortable changing the budget number. Typically, if we had two people bidding, they would put it in writing because then we pit those two. That's what our broker does. They pit the two against each other and say, hey, you're, you have a chance for business here. What's your best? Go. I will tell you, our, our broker did send the nine to 10% back to the people and say, look at our usage. We actually got an updated usage today. And they're making money on us even better than they were last week. So that's good for us. So there's a chance this could come in at four or five percent increase and you're looking at over a hundred thousand dollars off your budget. And you're looking at over a hundred thousand dollars off your budget.
The the people that the the person, the one entity that's bidding.
Yep.
Doesn't know there's other, there's not anyone else bidding, right?
It just they don't see what comes into market. So when it goes out to bid, when they put it in, they're bid in. They don't get to see like, oh, there's. Four other people that have put a number in. They don't get to see that. They only get our usage and the the number of people we have. Um. And they put their bid in. So it doesn't mean it can't come down. But a nine or ten percent increase is way better than twenty-five at this point in time. So if it comes down to four or five, you're looking at big, big bucks. But I'm not. I'm not comfortable. And neither I talked to Donna about this. Neither one of us was comfortable doing uh making any changes. You're looking at. Approximately forty-two thousand dollars every five percent. So you could be, if you get to the four or five percent increase versus twenty. You're looking at a hundred and sixty thousand dollars off your budget. That's what we're that's what we're hoping for.
About what percent is the um number that you have in the budget now?
It is exactly twenty-five. When it's not to exceed twenty-five, we have to go with that number because if it comes it it comes back and it's twenty-five. We have to have that number budgeted. I'd rather go down than come back to you and go, I have to add two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
There is a potential that it could come down to nine.
There's potential it could come down lower than that. They just gave the verbal at this point um. And it's a bit of a game. That's that's what our broker is doing. It's just saying, hey, you know, we're looking for your, what's your best offer? You can see our usage. It's it's outstanding. You're going to make a profit on this group as of the data that's been shown for the last year and a half. And we hope they come back with a better number.
Hope they're not watching.
They don't know who they are, though. They don't so that's. It's it's okay. I'm not worried about that. Neither is our. I didn't I didn't use the name either. The other things that I can share and and this kind of, even though it's it's it's, I think you have to. Look at program adjustments at the same time in your review programs, even though it's a different agenda item on here. Um, I'll stop sharing this. Um. I'm already looking at adjustments and insurance is part of that. And what would that look like? And I think as you consider for what, you know, pro program adjustments, you need to think about um. You know, where's your dollar amount and what are you going into? What do you? What would you lose if you cut things? We have already as an admin team sat um weeks ago at this point. Um, and made kind of a priority list. And obviously, the things at the bottom of the list are highly detrimental to kids. Absolutely detrimental to kids. The things at the top of the list are things that are um. Not detrimental to kids, but could be detrimental detrimental to um the district. All right. So so if I'm looking at this, obviously, number one, if we change health health insurance, if we can get that down, that's a few dollar amount off your budget. Um, I used a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars as a number. My second item, um, even though we fought for this just based upon where your number is today. And where you are as a board trying to figure out what to do with um your buildings. I really do think um that you should take the facilities director out of the budget this year. With the full expectation that you are putting it back in next year in your next budget cycle. And the reason for that is you could consider Ashford. I think you're gonna have a better sense of what where you're gonna spend dollars. Um, but you have to decide that as a board. You have to decide if you're comfortable with that. Remember that we haven't been able to fill the position at the dollar amount. Um, and no one's willing to share, no one stepped up to share that position. I unless the town has um selectmen have a a different conversation and they um decide to share. I don't know if it makes sense to continue that right now. And again, I'm saying not forever. Because I I've said it's really challenging to man manage a lot of projects. You are not in that in that groove yet. Um, that's a hundred and ten thousand dollar savings between insurance and um the position. Again, not forever, not forever, not forever. Want to make that clear.
So are you comfortable um overseeing all the?
Is there are no projects right now. I'm I'm comfortable overseeing what we're doing right now.
Okay.
Wh- when we are working with Steve and 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 Matt, um. You know, small repairs, a radar sign, things like that. I'm comfortable doing those things. When we start getting into. Significant projects where there's you need um engineers and you need architects and you need. You know, I'm gonna be honest, if you get into an HVAC.
Yeah.
Project. You need this person. Um, if you get into a roofing project, you need this person. I don't know if in the next year you're going to be there. Um, it's a little uncomfortable because you fought for it, but we've tried to fill the position and we've not been successful.
Um. With any of those projects, we'd have to go through the whole plan.
Not all, not all. But those two of those, the one HVAC does no longer qualify.
Right.
Um, unless they change something with the state. Um, unless it's a full renovation. If you do a full renovation, you need this position. Third thing I'm gonna throw out there, and I looked at this today. Um, we have a couple of years ago, I I uh really advocated for putting in a long-term subposition. Funds at each school in the sublines. Because every single year we were having a long-term sub and it was training our sublines. Um, the last two years, we've used some of those funds, not all of them. Um, and so what I'd say is you probably could cut ten thousand dollars from that. It's not impacting kids. Um, there is risk to it, meaning if we have somebody that says I'm going out and I need a long-term sub. You don't have the dollar amount for it. Um, and really where that applies is uh when you're paying someone that's. Cause you have the teacher salary um. Already booked, it's on your, it's it's budgeted. It's beyond that. It's when the teacher has lots and lots of sick days and you're paying them and you're paying the long-term stuff. That makes sense. So that would be ten thousand dollar savings. And then again, I don't like any. The majority of these ideas, I'm not a big fan of, but I have to give you something if you're gonna have a conversation about this. Uh, Sam, sorry, you know, I put the ten thousand dollars in the maintenance lines for each building for those emergency repairs. I think the money should be there. But it's not impacting kids today. It's it's something that it's we we could spend the money and then go back. And ask for money at the town meeting out of the repair lines. Um. It's not a great avenue because they could say no and then you'd have to pay for it. But. It's twenty thousand dollars. And then the last thing, uh, I talked to Donna today, um, is that we are seeing um. The KERMA number. Is uh coming down some. And the reason why is we budgeted for sixteen months. I mentioned that a minute ago. We actually um she when she put that number in, she does the uh the insurance side and those that contract side. She actually had a sixteen month uh budget again. And I said, we're not gonna do a sixteen month contract, it's in twelve. And so we dropped that twenty-five hundred dollars. We'll automatically do that change for you next time. Okay, so I'm giving you five discussion points. Um, and realistically, you have any other discussion points that you want to bring up. Those are really, I would say the insurance is a no-brainer, right? We would just do that. Yes. Um, the KERMA we would just do. Um, and then it's really up for discussion if you have others. Um, and then the conversation around facilities manager, the long-term sub and the maintenance.
If you did those items, do you know the number to get you to?
Yes, I knew you were gonna ask that. So with those numbers. Um, and I. It's it was a little bit intentional. I think it's around two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars. Uh, if you take that away from your current increase, it brings you down to three eighty-eight. Your budget would be a three point ninety-eight percent increase.
More palatable.
It is. And again, I look at detrimental um cuts. I don't think there's anything in there that like I've been living without a facilities manager. We've been living without a facilities manager forever. Um, I think long-term, you still have to have it. If the town came back tomorrow and said, we'd love to share it, I'd say put it back in. Um. Same thing, long-term subs and the maintenance, like we're gonna find a way to get money to do those things, but. You'd be around a three point ninety-eight percent with those things. If insurance is a hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars.
Right.
If insurance is one sixty, it's obviously better. It's, you know, only eighty, then it's a little bit worse. Time will tell about that one.
Yeah, cause most of the increase is contractual, is what, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars?
Yeah.
A contractual, contractual, I can't touch that.
Right, between um the you. You touch that by cutting people. And that's not, that's detrimental to kids because the people you're cutting are teachers. It's just not the way to do it. Um. And so that's why I recommend that, you know, if you're gonna discuss something, I try and give you some discussion points where it's not impacting. Education. You could argue that, well, not, you know, not having that money to fix, you know, a a broken heater is detrimental to education. We're gonna have to find money to fix that broken heater one way or the other. Um. But.
So I um I'm conflicted about the facilities coordinator position on. I I'm very nervous that if we were to take that out, it would never come back. Um. I I also, though, understand that we're not using that position the way that we had envisioned it. I I think I can, I mean, the way that the board had envisioned it. There's not. Ten million projects happening that need to be managed and. Um, you know, timelines and things like that. Um. So I guess I'm just saying that. So that I can go back to the videotape later when and if we do have a million projects going on and and. Say I I that position is incredibly important when those things do occur and. I would hope that we can make some kind of, you know. Commitment is a pretty, not the right word, but some kind of um understanding that when those projects start happening, if they start happening, that we would. Be that position in place.
You, we build our budget based upon need. And that's something that I have to look at when I when I make that that statement about that position. Um, remember that as a board. You can put any position back in you want. And the board of uh. Finance can only cut you dollars. They can't say you're cutting that position. So.
Dust, remember. To do it.
It, well, I, I mean, I'm telling you, I would put it back in next year depending on where you're at. Like, when we come back around. That it's it's gonna be aligned in your budget already. It's it's already there. It's just gonna go zero, eighty-one, eight, or whatever the new number is if it's shared, if it's a, you know, with another town or something. Um. It also is a little bit of a um, a good problem to have is that I would pull the ad from the remainder of the year. I'd have to. Um, and you know, we have a shortfall in special education. And you'd be filling your shortfall in special education with the money that you could just transfer from that position this year. There and not drain your non-moxic account. There's. Another reason to do it. It's not a great reason to do it, but there's definitely a need for that money. But I I agree, Jen. Um, it's not my favorite idea because we did battle for that position. But the board of finance, um, and honestly, quite frankly, the community can't help. They can give you feedback. But it's the seven of you that make the decision of what positions and what your dollars go to. So if in two years you wanna do some other position, you could do that.
I mean, I I appreciate the way that you described that. It's. I think the us us fighting for that position or advocating for that position, though, is a lightning. And.
Yeah.
So it's not, it's not the dollar amount. It's the position. And I, I mean, I. I understand what you're saying, but I think the reality is that it's the position.
Yeah.
So.
It'd be a little bit of a told you so.
I think we need to be in a place where we've gone, we've gotten our grant money from the state. We're ready to start a project. Or at least to start planning a project. I think when we're in that place, then that's a good time to bring this person back in. But I agree that right now.
Not in a place to free those timelines and match up.
No. No, he can't come out this far, you know.
Yeah.
If you're not a billionian.
No. No, that's repair phone. I mean, realistically, you're talking about July one twenty-six. Right? That's when you would have money back again. I mean, that's, do you really think in the next? Year, you're gonna have a decision from your board. You're gonna have support from the community to start to move forward on those things. And if you did, what can come out of that money, yeah, is that if you needed a specialist. Such as a a Colliers or a QA and M, that could come out of that money. And that is kind of the front side of the the money that you could, because it's it's short term.
Okay.
So that's that's the other balance of you're not entirely losing management over projects. It's and if you're preparing for projects, you could you could put money. It still have to be approved. It still have to go to, you know, town meeting. Um, but it's. It's a, it's a solution. It's not the best.
So if we did need an engineer, we did need an architect, we would still have access.
Yeah. Any other thoughts about the other items?
You figured out your your one twenty-six and your one ten. So did you? Other experience, in figuring out the one twenty-six, did you already pull out the facilities manager insurance?
No.
Okay, so I dug your numbers down a little bit because pulling that out completely would also. Wouldn't be as much of a decrease to the insurance to. I'm just, I'm. I'm trying to come up with a percentage.
Percentage for what? That you're comfortable with or a percentage that will?
I, no, no. I hesitate saying this, but the percentage I have in my back pocket. So when it goes here presented and they hammer it back down. It's already, the work's already done.
Mm-hmm.
So. I just, I. I didn't see as much of a savings by doing it that way. So but I put up all everything you put through together. I had a four point O B. Uh, just because I took down a little bit of the of the savings. Just because of that, the way the insurance is gonna balance out if you call it facility director too. And that's with that. The nine percent. So. I don't think that's a bad number. I think that's the back pocket. If it were me. Just me. Knowing what happened last year. I would go to order finance. With maybe six and a half. Knowing that it's gonna get destroyed. Come back afterwards. You guys. Fairly confident. If we go with the lowest, if we go first with the lowest number possible, there's still gonna. Yeah, that's what I was. So I don't think we should do that.
How much of a difference would it be between those seventy-two and the fifty? In terms of. If we were to bring that six point seven two down to six and a half, what would that look like in dollars? That would be what? Um.
Six point seven two to what? You're talking about fifteen, yeah, fifteen point five thousand.
Okay.
I mean.
Do you think that would?
The only thing, Arthur, that I I would um, you guys have to figure out what you're, how you're. Going to make your adjustments. If you have your insurance number before that, that's gonna be really hard to do. Because your insurance number could take you to a five-five.
Right, right, right.
You may decide that, you know what, you know, we don't wanna take the recommendations still. Do the KERMA because the KERMA is known now, right? Um, and then whatever change happens with insurance. You make everything else, we're leaving as is. You can decide to do. You make everything else, we're leaving as is. You could decide to do that. Um, again, I do. And this becomes a talking point and it's frustrating because um, last year I gave you, I gave you talking points about things that you could consider reducing. I do that so it's targeted. So you don't just pull something that's kid, you know, kid, kid impact out of the budget, it's intentional. It doesn't mean you have to do it. If if that's what happened last year was they, they were like, well, superintendent said you should do this and you didn't do it. That's not my point of giving you five items, I'm trying to give you some targets that are not going to impact kids. Um, so I think if you just took the insurance route and the karma route, you know. The insurance is not gonna, I hope, and I, the broker really does believe we're gonna have a number. By your approval date, uh, which is, uh, we expect February twelve, eleventh, what's that date? February eleventh, that's your regular board meeting. Um.
Why don't we present on the board of nine?
Uh, twenty second, I think. So my feeling really is, I mean, if I get that insurance number sooner, I'm just gonna email it to you. I'm gonna say, okay, here's the insurance number, we're signing a contract, we can put the actual number into the budget. You don't need a six o'clock meeting if you're not gonna make any other changes. You just review it quickly at your. Your regular meeting and you approve it and then you see what happens. That's up to you.
Um, I, I agree, and as we were talking about it, I, I think. That we should present. The budget. With um, the stuff in it and then. Use the things that we discussed tonight as the cards.
If you get, if you need it.
Yes.
So let me throw a curveball at you. If uh, you see value. And and you all uh, cringed a little bit when I said, remove the facilities manager position. Um, I watched it, you all did it um. You could add money to that salary. If you're going to leave it in the budget and and um, show value in that position, if you truly do believe it. You could add thirty thousand dollars to that salary. And you could hire someone July one.
Do we have the work that has to do?
The work is gonna be figuring all, everything, helping figuring everything out.
Especially Tammy comes through with numbers, then we'll really start going to fall and things like that.
Well, we have to get.
You don't have to get a percentage.
We have to get permission from the town or, you know.
To do, to do any of the projects, to access the million dollars, sure.
The, the projects that we would need the facility, facility managers.
Right, you wouldn't have the monster projects yet. But you might have the development of some of those things, you might, that person might be doing some marketing for you. That person might be figuring, you know, that's because that's the, how do you get the information out there? They could be managing, if you do a a recess um playground install at center school. They could be managing a a a traffic light installation. They could, you know, they could be coordinating a lot of those things. Um.
Is there, is there groundwork that that position could do that would make it? Um. Worth increasing the salary. I think, I think that salary at the expect, with the expectation that they're managing a bunch of projects and a bunch of. Contractors and things is one hundred percent reasonable. Is there work in the district to justify that increase? While we get that.
So. Kind of proactively, I'd say yes.
That's what I mean, like to set the stage.
I don't know that you need to decide. We're just gonna pick away at projects, we're gonna renovate a building, we're gonna build them. I don't think you need to decide that, to have that person, they could be doing the work for all of those things to get people's feedback. That's the marketing piece of it. There's a lot of work that has to be done around that now. There's no budget money for that. There's not like, you know, mailers and and, but we would have to do a lot of like coffee hours with, you know. That person and get the right people in the room to spread the word, like, here's where the board of education is at. What would you support? That's the big question that we all wanna know. What would you support? Cause once you figure out what people would support financially. Then you'll know kind of what you can do project wise.
I mean, my comment is that. We get so much heat on the roofs and I've heard you mention. And I've heard you mentioned before that. You would think it would make sense to try to do the roofs and the HVAC at the same time. Which I agree, in a perfect world, that would be nice. And I've heard you mention that your concern is the warranty on the roof. My question is, is I've worked on a lot of jobs replacing rooftop units. Switching down shots to side shots, you know, stuff like that, that includes roof penetrations.
Yep.
Where a roof warranty. Was held in place from whoever put it on, Silk Town.
Sure.
Eagle, whatever.
Yeah.
Things happen all the time that need roof penetrations, that maybe they'll add a mini split in a new computer room or something. Where they decide to put the condensing unit on the roof and someone's gonna drill a hole, you know what I mean? Like things happen all the time, they gotta replace an exhaust fan, something.
Right.
So I don't, I guess my question, and maybe I should have brought this up before, but I'm just thinking through like all the stuff that we wanna do. And wondering what the town wants us to do and how do we budget for a position, a salaried position when. Now we're kind of going back to, well. It does make sense maybe to do these things based off the CIP. So I know the town is gonna be like, well, why do we keep paying a hundred thousand dollars for this salary when we're not doing anything with it? And it takes a long time if it is a project that's gonna go through the process, so why hold it for another year? I understand Jen's concern with like, well, we take it out. Everyone's nickel and diming us as it is, they're probably, it's gonna be hard to be like. I feel like it would be more convincing to have it in if we're like, look what we're doing, we've made decisions. Cause we're kind of like flapping in the breeze right now, like, well, we don't know if we wanna do this. We did this study, you know, we're waiting, that failed, people voted on this three times, then it got messed up. You know what I mean? Like, I just feel like we're kind of all over the place. Maybe it's me because I'm having a hard, hard time following the process. Um, I just wanted to put my two cents in that. I've worked on a lot of projects in the last twenty years of my life, believe it or not, get old. Where there was a roof, roof warranty and we still did work. And there are certain protocols where you have to have that roofer who did it, doesn't necessarily have to be done at the same time. So I don't think that's fair to say. I know that we're trying to be, I don't think it's fair to say that it has to be done at the same time and that's why we're waiting. Because we may have the money to do the roofs, but then we have to do the HVAC at the same time. So now it's opening up a can of worms because we're over the two million and now everything has to be up to go, I don't, personally, and I could be wrong. I've been wrong a million times before, this ain't gonna be the last time I'm wrong. But I don't think that's fair to say that all that has to be done at the same time. Um. Feel like I'm on a tangent now, so I apologize, but all that to say that if we just do a roof project, which. I'm ninety seven percent sure would pass because people have been on our butts about this for years. We, we wanna know what the appetite is, well, we know that at least. And I don't think we necessarily need a facility manager to manage a roof project or one school. I could be wrong, but um, I think we could use like a, a CM or something to do a roof project.
Right, you could build it, your cost.
And I think that it might.
Yeah.
Turn, I think it might put a good feeling to the community for them to be like, look, they're listening to us. Yes, but then it's like, okay, well, what if we decide? I guess the concern too is like, okay, well, we put a new roof on hall, but then what are we, you know? Cause we're not, we wouldn't be getting a grant for it, so it wouldn't be concerned about the twenty, that twenty years, or you're just concerned about.
You don't have to, that was gonna be my question.
Cause how much money does a roof cost? Cause we have a couple million, so that's. Do we have to get a grant for that or you're, is there?
You don't have to.
So we don't have to worry about the twenty years, but then it's like, okay, if it goes back to the hall, we just spent a couple mil on a roof, but now we're not gonna.
And we're, right now, are we looking at three options? What they brought to us were three options, so we kind of have three options on the table. If we put a roof on the two buildings, then that kind of, unless we're willing to take that, that loss. Of, of doing something before the twenty years, it kind of eliminates the other possibilities of renovating one school. Or building another school.
The twenty years doesn't matter for me, so I'm on our own. The only thing that matters is if we decide to not use that listed building at all. Or if we.
And the money you're not gonna get as part of the deal. So your cost for one roof was a little under a million dollars after net cost of. Pre or after the grant. So you're looking at spending two million dollars, I'm, I'm ballparking that on the hall school roof.
Right.
With no reimbursement.
Right.
Yeah, so we, we need to make some firm decisions, I believe, before we move forward.
Well, then I'll give you, I'll give you a different spin on it, Sam, I think that. I understand where you're coming from. I a hundred percent too. Um, cause you don't have to do the HVAC at the same time. I think the argument is if you're gonna spend in this town a lot of money. You wanna make sure it's really thoughtful, uh, because if they put a roof on, in my opinion, that's the end of your conversation. You're not, they're, they're not gonna do a roof and then go, it's okay, do a full renovation now. If you did that by yourself, you're spending a lot more money. If you do it through the state, you get reimbursement. They're gonna say, hold on, you're gonna pay us back the difference of what, if you're leaving that building. However. I'm gonna take your thought and, and spend it a different way, um, cause the roofs are not leaking. If you did projects that did not um, qualify for state reimbursement. You could start doing some of those things. Uh, Steve's second boiler hall school that is on our CIP list. That may or may not qualify for reimbursement, I'm not sure if it does, but I'm just giving an example, um, that could be replaced. Right? You'd be, you'd be taking care of some of the things, your point though is the roof is something that people were, were loud about. Um. Yeah, I don't, I don't know.
Because. I'm just thinking through something. It just kind of. Feeling we're always trying to put the cart from the horse, not having a really hard time. Wrap in my brain around the sequence of things, so I apologize if I'm.
Aren't we, right now, we find out numbers from the state if we're going to get a decent reimbursement rate? To see if we can even do a renovation? And if they come back and say, no, we're gonna give you sixty percent, then we'll just throw roofs on and.
That's where you're at.
So we have to wait until.
Right, but there's no actual deadline for that.
For what? The number?
Yeah.
I'd say this is in, it's in this current session.
Okay.
I do think that's your timeline. Because that's gonna dictate it, again, what can you afford, what will people support is, is the point. So if it stays at sixty three percent reimbursement. Then the question becomes, okay, you know that you can't do, you know, X because it's too much money. Could you do Y? Would you support Y? And if it's still too much money, then. It's gonna move down to picking off projects and exactly what you're talking about is start doing roofs. Jim Marshall did present a very, um, although it was very complex. Um, he presented something that I've not seen, and I have not talked to him about this. Um, at last CIP, he presented a, what I'll call a ten year plan. For capital improvements for this town, including the firehouse and school, um, renovation project large. Uh, and road project, um, and doing incremental mill rate increases each year. Targeted for CIP to put money away. Um, so that you could bond a very large amount of money, but you'd have the, the um, money there to do it. Now, I, it's, it, I don't know how raw the idea was, but I've not heard anything like that. Because right now you're fighting against the firehouse, you're fighting against roads, you're fighting against truck payments, right? That's in a seven million cre- mill increase in one year for a renovation project or a new school at sixty percent, it's never gonna fly. But that he was trying to um, pitch. Can you be patient enough? Can you maintain your building so that you could do something in five years or seven years or ten years, whatever it takes to get to that number? Um, it's the first time I've ever seen someone do that. And trying to show what that continued mill rate increase gradually. If what it does to your pot of money, which is kind of what you're sitting on right now. Right? You have a pot of BOE money for repairs that could be your first bond payment that has already, people have already felt the tax on it. They're not gonna, they feel the, the future payment to offset that sum. Um. So that's like, that's another thing that you, you know, into consideration too. It's, it's the first time he's shared it. Think it was, it was very complex, um. The spread, I would say the spreadsheet was like on steroids, um. But again, people have to support whatever it is. And it's, it's a challenge to know that I do think if you put a roof on now, this conversation is over.
It, it almost, it almost has to be because if you put a roof on buildings that are basically. Uh, I mean, falling apart is a little dramatic, but that, that really urgently needs to be updated, fixed. Just to meet minimum standards, um. It's, forgive the expression lipstick on a pig, I feel like that's um. That's not where the money should go. And I understand also what you're saying, Sam, though, that's an issue that. Um, I'm repeating myself, in other circumstances, a lightning rod for, for folks in town, it's very easy to stand up at a meeting and say, you guys haven't done the roofs yet. There's a whole host of reasons that the roofs aren't done yet, um, and everybody knows those. But it's a talking point that people continue to bring up to um, argue against. Things in school. I guess part of it too, and maybe this is. I try to be analytical, sometimes too much. But I'm just gonna say my kind of thought process and it's. Potentially wasteful, but there's a difference between the cost of something and the cost of something psychologically. The physical cost and a psychological cost and, and so. If you are. If it costs a million dollars to buy the majority of people in town. Favoritism over something because it makes it seem like you're listening to them. In the grand scheme of things, you can win them over in your favor for other things that need to be done psychologically. That's kind of my point, even though it might be wasteful, cause it's like, let, do you understand what I'm trying to say? I'm just thinking about it.
I wish we could do it without first spending a million dollars.
But that's just kind of like, my, not that I'm trying to be manipulative in any way, I'm just saying from. The tiny viewpoint that I've watched over the last couple of years that I've only been involved slightly. It seems like. People. Get hung up on certain things and it becomes a point of contention to even to the detriment of other things. But the average person does not have time. Capacity, you name it, to pay attention to the grand scheme of things. And I really applaud James and I think Ralph Tullis tried to do something similar when he was talking about everything. Back in the SBC, I don't, it wasn't exactly what James did, but I remember Ralph tried to do something similar. To show like, hey, we've got all these other things going on, we can't just, you know what I mean? And unfortunately, it's been a snowball effect coming down, but I'm just saying. In the grand scheme of things, if we're looking at spending. Upwards of fifty seven million dollars, what's one percent to gain the favor of? Okay, well, yeah, they did this and now they wanna do this, okay, well, they're doing it, you know what I'm trying to say? And I don't know if that would work. And I know a million dollars is a lot of money, but if we're looking at even anything else, and I know it's crappy to put good money after bad. I'm just saying my whole thought process of the wheels crank in my brain.
So.
That's all.
I'm just gonna bring it back to the current budget then.
I'm not trying to, sorry.
No, no, I think this is really good conversation. I think we should add this to next agenda.
Exactly what I was gonna say.
And it might make sense for, to ask Jim to come and do a presentation, so you. And it might make sense for, to ask Jim to come and do a presentation so that you all can see it, but on a shortened version. Uh, because it was a, 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 a bit heavy on the first time. But I think from your perspective, Sam, for this budget. I think your point is, and I started this with saying, do you wanna add thirty thousand dollars to a salary? I think the point is, no. Right? Uh, you'd rather see it, leave it as is or take it out. Um, because if you did a roof project, you could hire. A project manager or, you know, someone that is, would just be part of the cost of it. And you wouldn't need that. Right? Is that fair to say?
My personal thought, and I may get hate for this and a voodoo doll made out of my hair that falls out. Is I don't think we're ready for this position yet. I think it was great to advocate for it. I think that. It might be, I, we might be shooting ourselves in the foot and it might be a harder fight next time around to advocate for it when we do have. What we're waiting on, the percentages. Yes, this is what it's gonna be. You know what I mean? I just don't think we're quite there. It would be really nice if it could be a shared position because I think the whole town would really benefit from it. Um, I haven't been able to attend a meeting yet, otherwise. I gotta make, try to make an appointment to attend a select meeting. Um, but. We can only work with what we have. So I personally don't think that we need it right now. So I wouldn't mind. Seeing that hundred cut. But I know it's gonna be a pain in the butt to fight for it again. When we do need it, but I just feel like it would have more substance, cause it's like, well, we need it because of this, this and this. Not we need it because we might do this, we might do that. We don't really know what we're doing, but it's there, it's in case, but nobody wants to be paid that amount. You know what I mean? So.
A lot has changed.
The market's what the market is.
Yeah, a lot has changed, I think, too, since we, um. Put that in, when they needed, you know, all of Tammy's work and so on, we did not see that, so. Big difference. Um, I don't think we knew that we needed firehouses, so we firehouse at that point, not really, so. Um, and considering the big picture kind of thing, that maybe would have made a little bit of a difference as far as those things go. And I think, um, we're definitely gonna need this meeting. Before our next meeting, the, um, six o'clock budget conversation again on the eleventh, because then. It gives all of us kind of time to decide what we wanna do about these things. Um, and even go back into the budget and see if maybe there are some other things that some of you think would be a better, um. Item to list, to list here to consider. So. Uh, maybe we can do a little bit of homework between now and then and see how you feel about these things that Phil mentioned. Um, and then when we meet again, be ready to share your thoughts so that we can start to make some decisions about what we're gonna put forth. At that point.
Can I adjust that a little bit, Brian? Cause I don't wanna do numbers on the fly. Not, it's not good. If you have some thoughts ahead of time, you should share them with me so I can have calculations prepped.
Okay.
If you all share ahead of time and say, yeah, you know, well, we agreed. Take this out, then I can be prepared to do that, because if I'm doing numbers on the fly and I miss something and you approved it. That's the number you approved. I don't, depending on how many changes. If you're talking about one or two changes, that's not a problem. Um, but I'm already going to prep for you the karma piece and I'm hoping to have the insurance piece for you. I'll have those prepped as long as the insurance piece is done. But I wanna make sure that if you have other things that I'm gonna have to start making adjustments on. Uh, that I have time to make sure it's accurate.
That's not this stuff.
Correct.
Okay, so if anybody has some, a different plan, a different idea, then yes, we'll share that with you, so you can pull that together. Okay, so let's plan for that, um, meeting prior to our regular board meeting and then. We, I think we're a group of people who agree that we can't do nothing. Going forward, I thought that was our understanding. Um, and so we, there's a huge conversation that needs to be had, like everything on the table. Totally frank about all of it. No holds barred. Don't worry if you look silly. Um, ridiculous. Bossy, whatever, like we just need to trust each other to throw it all on the table and figure some stuff out. Like I'm picturing giant. Poster board paper back here and me and my mess, Mr. Sketch Mother, okay? Like we need to like workshop this situation. And figure out what we're gonna do about our buildings because. Doing nothing does not feel good to any of us. So we do have some things that we're kind of on pause about and that's fine. Um, but we should probably talk about it at least. I don't think there's anything. So. Building combo, it seems like a really tough time to add that to our baseline right now, but it's relevant, so.
You'll be probably, should be beyond there for the most part.
By then?
Yeah.
Okay.
I know in the past, means another meeting. We've all been coming to lots of meetings, but. We used, there was some conversations in the past that I went and watched the workshops where they were talking about. Five year plan or like, it was. I don't know. That'd been ten, ten years ago. I don't even, don't get me wrong, we've all been in. It was very Wallace and. Well, different people like that. But trying to decide what we did with our school, you know, and, and they did that. They had, it was at all school and it was paper and it was like, well, what are some options and? Pros and cons, back and forth. And that's what the meeting was about. It wasn't in the middle of an agenda. Yeah, and that's till ten o'clock at night. That was, it was like this.
Just need the right people in the room.
Yeah, I know, but it was, it was mostly the board with a few people. Sitting. And, um. I mean, honestly, it, it didn't. Go that far. Maybe we ended up having conversations with Mansfield about. You know, sending out. Yeah, and the big binders.
So I mean. I think it's a good idea because I feel like. What Sam brought up. There's, there's some frustration probably in all of us for different reasons, but like. We keep spinning our wheels, we're going around in a dribble wheel, but. There's never any getting awkward stopping.
Yeah, like can we do?
And, and it gets confusing about, you know. It gets confusing for us that are in the. So it gets confusing for the public, like, okay, um, you know. Before COVID, we were gonna fix the roofs and then something happened because of, they told us we couldn't. And so then. Now why haven't we had, and now we have this other conversation? So there's just so much information and we try to bring it together with. Presentations, but there's still. Some muddling that happens in your brain because it's just. Confusing.
We have what has happened and we need to sort of start shifting through what in the world are we going to do? What in the world are we going to do going forward? And not just, um. I think we need to be very clear too about what is needed. Understanding that that's not what, um, the community will have an appetite for, but I don't wanna lose sight of that either and. Uh, lose track of the things that are needed, um, anyway. So there's kind of two things to want, you know, I feel like that's part of the conversation as well.
We're going to do that meeting, I would strongly advise invite Tammy to that meeting.
I'm gonna call her too and see where she did, so she can.
Cause I think that's the, the bigger pull up in all of us is. What can we get from Stacey?
Yeah, and she knows a lot about us. She's very involved. Maybe, um, prefer to hear some of that conversation with me, help you give her something else. So do we want to add that? What does the agenda look like?
I don't know, I'll look at it. It might be worth a, a conversation by itself too. Yeah, I'll, I'll look and see what the February agenda looks like and if it's massive, then, and why do. You'll be on your budget. At this point, you're used to meeting every week.
Okay, so our plan is, uh, we will meet Tuesday, February eleventh at six P M.
Yeah, yeah.
To discuss, um, where we are with the budget. If you have any suggestions or thoughts. Brought to help with our percentage agencies. Other than what Phil talked about tonight, please email him so that he has time to pull together some number scenarios. Um, so that we can have a clear and, um, very accurate percentage going forward. Um. We will add to our February eleventh regular meeting. Conversation about our buildings, maintenance, repair, what in the world are we going to do? Giant posting, no favor thing. Um, if it's not too heavy. If it's super heavy, you'll let us know and then we'll, I mean, I love Wednesday, so you guys, so we. All right, we are ready to return. We just need a moment in a second. And. Second. Everybody, since they. I guess we are, thank you, all right.